Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 3, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Cooper excused tonight. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I'd like to call forward our city manager, Jay Burney, for an announcement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, for the record, Jay Burney, city manager. One of the most important jobs that I have as city manager is to work with the council to manage our operating budget, ensuring that we are being good stewards of our resources and that we remain within budget in terms of expenses versus revenue. Although our sales tax revenues tracked well within the first quarter, we closed out the month of April $200,000 under our sales tax projections. I've also been tracking jail costs, revenues associated with BLS transport, and our development fee fund, all of which are running a bit behind, or in the case of jail costs, a bit over our budget to date. Although I am hoping that this is a blip, not a trend, I think it is prudent to exercise some caution. I don't want to get too far into the year to affect change if our revenues continue to decline. I've communicated to the department directors that I'm implementing a spending freeze effective June 1 of this year. I'm asking departments to freeze spending on discretionary items within their budgets with the exception of necessary safety, protective equipment, or funds needed to advance our priority work. I've also implemented a restriction on out-of-state travel unless required for certifications, and we have implemented a soft hiring freeze, which means all positions must be approved by me before an offer of employment is made. I believe that this is a responsible decision at this moment in time. I'm going to continue to work with the council and monitor our budget moving forward, and if sales tax or other indicators I am tracking improve, we can modify this direction moving forward as needed. We're also going to get more into this discussion at your mid-year retreat in just a couple of weeks. I want to just thank the department directors for their support and input into this. I look forward to more council conversations as we move into our 2026 budget preparations.
Thank you, Jay. It's indicative of where we are with our municipal budget, but we appreciate your leadership and, you know, we'll get through this year, just like we did last year. Thank you. All right, so with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
We move approval. Second?
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. We have an agenda. So our first item tonight is Item 2A on your agenda, and it is special recognition and proclamation recognizing LGBTQIA2S+ Pride Month and Capital City Pride Weekend. And we have a shared reading of the proclamation, beginning with Councilmember Green.
Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots of June 1969, an act of resistance against police brutality and oppression, and a pivotal moment in the ongoing struggle for LGBTQIA2S+ civil rights, and whereas pride is both a celebration of resilience and joy in LGBTQIA2S+ communities and a reminder that the fight for full equality is far from over, and?
Whereas across the country, there has been an alarming and unprecedented surge in legislation targeting LGBTQIA2S+ people, especially transgender, non-binary, and gender-expansive individuals, seeking to restrict access to health care, limit expression, and erode fundamental human rights. And whereas, in the face of these attacks, it is imperative for local and state governments to not only celebrate the diversity of our communities, but to actively safeguard the dignity, rights, and safety of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals, and?
Whereas Washington State continues to advance protections for LGBTQIA2S+ communities, building on Governor Jay Inslee's 2024 Inclusive Education Bill with significant 2025 legislation under Governor Bob Ferguson. This includes expanding access to gender-affirming care, aligning parental rights with nondiscrimination laws, improving access to hormone therapy, and streamlining gender marker changes on official documents. And whereas, the city of Olympia proudly affirms that love is love, trans rights are human rights, and that everyone deserves to live free from fear, discrimination, and violence regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and?
Whereas in 2025, the Olympia City Council adopted Resolution Number M2591, officially declaring Olympia a sanctuary city for LGBTQIA2S+ individuals. This resolution strengthens protections, affirms the rights to gender-affirming care and expression, and commits the city to opposing discrimination in all forms. And whereas Olympia has been honored to serve as the host city for the first Olympia Pride and later renamed Capital City Pride in every pride since, and?
Whereas Capital City Pride continues to uplift and empower our community, creating spaces that celebrate the joy, resilience, and unity of LGBTQIA2S+ people. In June 2025, the festival expands to a three-day celebration, producing more than 10 empowering stages, all led by our queer, Black Indigenous People of Color community and women, reflecting its growing impact and deepening commitment to inclusivity, health, accessibility, and community connection, and?
Whereas the city of Olympia honors and celebrates the contributions, creativity, and resilience of the LGBTQIA2S+ community, and recommits to being a welcoming, inclusive, and just city for all, and?
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQIA2S+ Pride Month, and June 27, 28, and 29 as Capital City Pride Weekend in the city of Olympia, and reaffirms the city's unwavering commitment to protecting and uplifting LGBTQIA2S+ communities and standing resolutely against hate in all its forms. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this third day of June 2025, Olympia City
So at this time, I'd like to call forward Natalie Koblenz, who is the president of Capital City Pride, and also Pog Odonohue as well, who's joining you as well.
Thank you all so much for inviting us into your home and to your city and to creating such safe spaces for us. We really appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you from my heart because I feel like in the past six years that I've been here, I have grown as a leader in this community and a representative of Olympia, and I'm proud to be here. And so thank you so much for allowing me to grow and to sparkle and to be able to share my vision and also my strengths with newer generations. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about the festival, but I also want to leave some space for Pog to speak. So I'm going to introduce Pog and then come back and tell you about the festival.
Hi, guys. My name is Pog Odonohue. I'm the outreach coordinator at Capital City Pride, and I just want to say thank you so much for your dedication today. I'm from Salt Lake City, and Olympia's environment is a whole new world to me, and I feel really loved and safe here, so.
So I'll be passing these pamphlets around. It's the first year that we get to do pamphlets and booklets because we have so much stuff going on, and we are taking over the last weekend. We have collaborations with The Symphony, collaborations with Harlequin Productions, with The Bridge Music Project, we have Window Seat Media, and the community print, and we are just so happy to be a part of all of these collaboration of art nonprofits to really bring the light and the brightness to the festival this year. We also have a time on Saturday at the port if anyone wants to get married. We're going to be having a marriage directly after The Symphony plays and right before the breakdancing competition. There's going to be, there's going to be flash mobs, there's all sorts of things happening this year, and everyone is jumping in to help out, so we really would love to see you there and enjoying moments with us, and we value all of you, so thank you for allowing us to grow.
Thank you both so much. Any comments from the dais? Well, I look forward to Capital City Pride every year. It's always a great time, and Natalie, under your leadership, it's just been really tremendous to watch it grow and come back post-COVID. You've done a really great job year after year, as well as all of the volunteers within the community. I really am heartened by where we live and just seeing the tremendous amount of support for everyone, the care for those of us who are a part of the LGBTQIA2S+ community. We have tremendous allies and, dare I say, even accomplices in Olympia with us, and it's just really encouraging, as well as the folks that are up here, might I add, I would call them accomplices in the support for our community. And I spoke earlier at the county as well, saw you there, to accept the Pride proclamation from the county when you were there, and one of the things I talked about was just how we're being targeted in a way that is new but not really new, and they continue to try to legislate us out of existence, and it's quite impossible because we are who we are, and you can't do anything to change that no matter how hard you try. It's been really difficult, it's been really tough the last few months to sort of watch all the ways that they're getting creative to try to attack us. Things like in Texas where they had, one point, thought I saw it all, but they introduced a bill to try to jail people for gender identity fraud. You know, that's something that is the kind of thing that our community faces, and I know that we all understand that when you come for one, you come for all, and it shouldn't take it happening to you for you to care. We should all care whether we identify with who is being attacked in the moment or not. This is something that I personally think is not just a personal value, I think it's an American one. It's why this country exists in the first place. So I look forward to Capital City Pride, where we get to celebrate because as all these attacks happen, it actually makes pride more relevant. It's the reason you see us out in the streets, living out loud who we are, because we're not going to be stopped from living our truth. And I'm just grateful to live in a community where we can do that and we're supported. And I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun, especially with the weddings now. That'll be interesting to see who does that, who gets an annulment and two days later. No, I'm just kidding. It's a dry pride festival, so. But wow, what a way to have a reception like right after, right? So thank you so much again. I'm sure it'll be great, and I look forward to joining you. All right, so at this time, I'll call you forward and present you to proclamation, and we can take a photo. And council members, if you have flags, you can bring them.
[inaudible]
All right, well, that concludes our special recognition portion of our agenda for this evening, so we will move on to public comment. We do have one person signed up in chain, or, excuse me, online, and that is Larry Jezzo. And Larry knows the rules of public comment, so.
Larry's traveling.
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, okay. And I guess I can start the video? Oh, yeah, there goes. Okay. I support the development of a triangle area to become a balanced, human-oriented, and a sustainable area, but I am concerned that as you move forward, you don't sacrifice the values that are held by Olympians in an effort to entice developers. Do not sell short the Olympians of today and tomorrow, and do not give concessions and incentives in our name that increase our costs but don't further our values. For example, require developers to pay for and build the physical infrastructure that creates social infrastructure by building design features and communal spaces like parks. We have a chance to build a just, healthy, and safe community from the get-go, and that should be a non-negotiable requirement. Also, require that the development provides income-integrated units. It is unhealthy for a community to isolate lower-income people in separate buildings, usually further away from jobs and cultural amenities. The large multi-story buildings envisioned should be affordable for a diverse range of Olympians. Facilitating large developments affordable only to those most well-off is, in effect, a form of exclusionary zoning. It is widely documented that economic segregation in housing is correlated with de facto racial and other identities in segregation. In April 2024, the Planning Commission wrote to the council and asked you to, quote, "prioritize requirements for mixed-income housing and mixed-income neighborhoods in the final sub-area plan and resulting future comprehensive plan and the Olympia Municipal Code updates." In the course of the OPC deliberations, several planning commissioners expressed concern that low-income and affordable housing developments may result in, quote, "redlining effect," unquote, if such developments are proposed in isolation and separate from mixed-income housing. This concern was also expressed by the Olympia Social Justice Equity Commission. Their points are worth keeping at the forefront as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, and that concludes public comment for this evening. Are there any comments from council? Councilmember Jerome?
Yeah, thanks, Larry. I did want to reflect back that the concerns that came from the Planning Commission and the Social Justice and Equity Commission had to do with the 100% affordable housing requirement to get the bonus, the density bonus, the extra floors, and we did address that in the final plan by reducing, I think, down to 30%, but it's no longer at 100%. So I just want to acknowledge that we were responsive to the concerns that were raised.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the consent calendar, but before we do, I'm tracking that we have three items requested for a pool, beginning with Item 4D, which is our mid-year retreat agenda, which was requested as a pool by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. For the record, I'm still Jay Burney, city manager. Included in your council packet is Item 40, on your consent calendar is the proposed agenda for your upcoming mid-year retreat on June 13. As council knows, we have contracted with Sue Mountain with the Leniker Group to be your facilitator, as Amy Leniker is unavailable. I've had a chance to spend some time with Sue planning your agenda, and I'm really excited to work with Sue, and I think she's going to do an excellent job working with the council. In terms of your agenda, you have some training in the morning around challenging conversations. At the dais, each of you received tonight a book called Crucial Conversations, which the facilitator is asking all of us to read in advance, so I'll say this, I'll give you a little shortcut, because I know your schedules are busy. There's an exercise on page 120 of the book. If you do the exercise, it will point you to the specific chapters that you should read depending on your strengths and stretch points in your conversation. So if you do the exercise and read those chapters, you'll be ready for the conversation with each other at the retreat. So I just wanted to give you all a little shortcut. Also, in, up at your dais, tucked into your book is a fresh copy of the agenda, because the facilitator made some last-minute changes, as well as a copy, an updated copy of the work plan, so another piece of your homework is just a review of the work plan, so we can include that as part of your conversation. So we'll do that work in the morning, do some work together in the morning. After lunch, the department directors will join us as we review progress on the 2025 work plan and start our discussions on the 2026 budget. I do want to thank the committee of the chairs for all their work, working with me and with the council, helping to plan the agenda, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
All right, so I also have requests for pools for Items 4E on the agenda, which is the approval of an ordinance related to the adoption of the Capitol Mall Triangle Engineering Design and Development Standards, which amends Olympia Municipal Code, Chapter 12.02. And then I have another pool as well related to that, so, which was requested by Councilmember Gilman to be pulled.
I wasn't aware of these polls, so I'm not sure what we need here.
I just pulled them to make a comment.
Oh, okay. All right. So, well, go ahead and make your comment on 4E, and then also on 4F, which is the approval of another ordinance to amend our code titles 14 and 18 to establish a planned action for the Capitol Mall Triangle.
I just have a single comment for both items. It'll take about 90 seconds here, but I, this week, I spent quite a bit of time rereading my notes and correspondence over the past three years related to this West Side Triangle project, and these items before us tonight have not earned my affirmative vote, so I'm going to abstain from voting on 4E and 4F. First, I don't believe that the city negotiated with the developers to advocate for community benefits or the interests expressed by over 140 West Side residents. I don't believe that the resulting West Side Triangle Subarea Plan dreams of anything. Rather, instead, I believe the Triangle Plan articulates the zoning and building code changes that the mall owners require if they're to build a town center-type development on the site. Second, as projects come to us, I think we should insist on the things that came up during public comments. Public spaces as a priority, pocket parks, plazas, bike paths, and pedestrian pathways accessible to all residents, that existing housing should be preserved and future housing available at below-market rates, that the redevelopment must recognize global warming is caused by the burning of fossil fuels, and guide our redevelopment efforts in climate resilience, and prioritize traffic and travel by public bus, bike lanes, walking, insist on a gridded street network, and have safe and convenient walkability that will require a dense network of pedestrian walkways and social trails. And then lastly, to emphasize the preservation and expansion of locally-owned small businesses in our efforts. So going forward from here, it's my hope that the city will better balance our roles as regulators of development, as encouragers of development, and as advocates for community benefit. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Mayor Potem Nguyen?
Yeah, so appreciating your abstention, I would move to adopt consent calendar items 4A through 4D.
Second?
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar items 4A through 4D signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then I need separate motions to register the votes for Items 4E and 4F on the consent calendar. So I need a motion to approve Item 4E. One moment. The mayor doesn't make motion, so I'm going to hand this to Mayor Potem.
Move to approve on second reading the ordinance related to adoption of the 2025 Capitol Mall Triangle Engineering Design and Development Standards and amending Chapter 12.02 of the Olympia Municipal Code, also known as Item 4E.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Me.
Okay. All right, and we have another item on the consent calendar as well, Item 4F on the agenda, and I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve on second reading an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Titles 14 and 18 and establishing a planned action for the Capitol Mall Triangle Subarea, known as Item 4F this evening.
Second?
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And we have one abstention. Thank you. All right, so that takes us to our business items for tonight, and we will begin with Item 6A on the agenda, which is an update on the citywide wayfinding master plan and the approval of the wayfinding signage design concepts. And we have Kelly Pers Brosseth, the city's strategic communications director, who will introduce Matthew Delayed, George Lim, and Anna Giuliano from the Tangram Design LLC.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As always, it's a pleasure to be before you. For the record, I'm Kelly Pers Brosseth, I'm your strategic communications director. I'm also going to beg your pardon because my allergies are wreaking havoc, so at any point, I could just peel off into some wild coughs. So though Olympia is the capital city, our current wayfinding is insufficient. Our downtown strategy notes that our wayfinding signage in downtown are in need of an update. Our entrance signs look badly outdated. West Olympia has very little identification, directional, or informational wayfinding. A few recognized neighborhoods have created identification signage, but there's not consistency between our neighborhoods, and we wanted to sort of level the playing field and add a little equality and equity. We wanted to create a citywide wayfinding plan for the city, and the plan would be a guiding document that would incorporate best practices in wayfinding for the community. After a robust RFP process last spring, we got 12 RFPs, we interviewed six firms, and the city hired Tangram Design LLC. The selection committee included staff from communications, public works, transportation staff, CP and ED planning staff, parks and parking, as well as a representative from the Downtown Association. Part of why we chose Tangram is because not only were they clearly excellent in the field, they were the only one of the firms who talked about SEPTED, as you know, which is an important criteria for the city's design, and their principle has roots in our community and in our area. So over the course of the last year, Tangram has dug into the community, they've visited Olympia a couple of times, they've engaged community members throughout the process, specifically holding stakeholder engagements at City Hall in this room in June of 2024, in November of 2024, and in February. On April 16, they presented to CLIPS, and CLIPS reviewed the design concepts and had a good conversation around them. They asked Tangram to add a concept for consideration that merged elements of two of the designs, and we're here tonight to get council's approval on the design. So Tangram is joining us tonight to present the signage concept shaped from the engagement with the community as well as those conversations with CLIPS. Here with us from Tangram is Matthew Delayed, George Lim, and Anna Giuliano, and again, we're seeking council approval of one of the concepts to move forward to the master plan work. Even though they all say Matthew Delayed, they are actually different people, so. Just want to note that. And I'm going to turn it over to them now.
Wonderful, thank you. And to clear things up, I am the real Matthew Delayed, so this everybody knows, and I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Well, I'm Anna Giuliano, one of the designers for Tangram Design.
George Lim, founding partner of...
They've engaged community members throughout the process, specifically holding stakeholder engagements at City Hall in this room in June of 2024, in November of 2024, and in February. On April 16th, they presented to CLIPS, and CLIPS reviewed the design concepts and had a good conversation around them. They asked Tangram to add a concept for consideration that merged elements of two of the designs, and we're here tonight to get council's approval on the design. So Tangram is joining us tonight to present the signage concept shaped from the engagement with the community as well as those conversations with CLIPS. Here with us from Tangram is Matthew Delayed, George Lim, and Anna Giuliana. And again, we're seeking council approval of one of the concepts to move forward to the master plan work. Even though they all say Matthew Delayed, they are actually different people. Just want to note that. And I'm going to turn it over to them now.
Wonderful. Thank you. And to clear things up, I am the real Matthew Delayed. So just so everybody knows, and then I'll let the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Well, I'm Anna Giuliano, one of the designers for Tangram Design.
George Lim, founding partner of Tangram Design. Awesome. So first, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the mayor, the council, and for allowing us this time to show you where we have progressed to. We have enjoyed this project, had a lot of fun. And the comments back from CLIPS was warranted and challenging for us, and we wanted to show you where we got to. One of our, you know, big statements is, you know, that we use in our tagline is your community are strict, and I hope we prove that to you. We listen to the community, and if we didn't hear it all, we listen to it again. And if we miss something, we'll listen again. And then that's how we work. So I'm going to hand it over to Matthew, and he'll start us off and walk you through what has been done.
Appreciate it. Thank you, George. Before we get into the concepts, we're just kind of give a quick background of where we're at and how we got to kind of to the concepts, and then we will go through them briefly. It's project status. As Kelly mentioned, multiple meetings with stakeholders, community, had a community survey and met with the CLIPS doing our city council review. And then once we get through this, we'll work on finalizing some additional items, to get these things built and bid out. Quick project overview of what we were tasked with this project. Kelly did do a good job. She mentioned, you know, developing an overall signage wayfinding for the city. But our first kind of phase of areas focuses on downtown and west side, developing wayfinding signage, but also developing entry and gateway signs, being consider of the neighborhoods, how we would identify those, providing some concepts for interpretive and placemaking items, and then, you know, following all local codes and jurisdictions. So just some existing conditions, which I'm sure you're aware of. But up on the left, we have some, there's some of the existing vehicular wayfinding. Some of the issues are a lot of signage clutter located in areas where a lot of information located on the opposite side of an intersection, causing delays and drivers knowing the information that they need prior to the turn. So that's what you see in the bottom left photo, you know, us proposing things instead of being what they look like in the top left, something that gives before the turn improved safety, but also navigating throughout the city. In the middle, top middle, you have your existing gateway sign, which is hidden, hard to see, and dated. Looking at other areas where we can place wayfinding or gateway signs that really highlight a good entry point and can be visible, that people know they have arrived. And then lastly, in the top right, overall, the city Olympia, there's just a lack of pedestrian and bike signage, really inhibits the walkability of visitors and residents at the same time. So in the bottom right, just showing some things that can be added, some pedestrian wayfinding, as well as some bike directions wayfinding to improve bikeability and walkability in the community.
Okay, great. And then, as Kelly said, we've had quite a few meetings with the stakeholders. So this is just kind of some of the feedback that we got from them during our engagement sessions. We asked the participants to tell us their desires and expectations of the wayfinding system, the wants for the visitor experience, and then just some key words that describe Olympia's community culture and environment. So you can, as you can see, creative, outdoorsy, inclusive, counterculture, funky and local. So this is just some of the initial stuff that we get started with when we first get into Olympia. And then after that, we do a site survey of Olympia, so kind of getting boots on the ground to experience the place for ourselves. And this kind of helps us understand what Olympia is about and kind of how it functions. This also helps us to see what's out there, what's missing, kind of what's needed for a wayfinding system, and kind of helps direct where a lot of our research and kind of inspiration for these concepts comes from. So then we continue. Oh, yeah. You.
Good.
Yep.
All right. And then just before we jump into the concepts, color is always a fun thing when we deal with city projects and wayfinding things, because everybody has a different opinion. We do want to know that the colors noted in the concepts that we will show are taken from the environment. As you can see, sort of that palette, we like to use the local environment and include that into the signage. And then we also look at seeing, hey, you know, can these things be contrasting and work in the environment with these colors? So showing that they can kind of work together, but also work against each other in a contrasting comparison. So there is a reason behind the colors that you will see in the concepts. All right. So we will show you the concepts, and then that were initially used to gather information from the stakeholders with the feedback. And then following that, I'll have the CLIPS feedback and the communities and stake, all that feedback that you guys will need to see. And then following that, we'll show the combined concept. So just to give you a heads up as we go through this.
Great. So this is concept one. So for this concept, we really wanted to create like a unique shape, something that would stick out in the environment. We paired it with some nice double pole wrought iron features that kind of bring it a nice sophistication. And we put some wood base caps along the bottom there to kind of, you know, highlight the Pacific Northwest, you know, vibes that you guys have out there. And then this is just the rest of the system, kind of the parking pedestrian, any kind of bike wayfinding signage, really using some nice green colors that pop, and then, you know, some high contrast for some of the more informational signs. This is showing the signs in scenes, so you can see them in the environment. And then the three Ds, and we like to add on, you know, little moments for interpretives, trying to integrate history, art, culture into our signage systems. One of the things we were tasked with was sort of identifying the different neighborhoods. So this is just showing how the color would change, and some of the typography along the bottom would change for each of the different neighborhoods. We also put on different like sculptures that could be used to differentiate between the different neighborhoods, and those would be, you know, created by local people, artisans. Another thing we're tasked with is differentiating between the different districts. So the creative district and the historic district. So we came up with a solution to put medallions on some of the different bases. And then this is just a single pole option, if you all wanted something that was a little bit more simple.
Awesome. So then, concept two. Concept two, this was taking kind of some of the water influences and using the O for Olympia, so using that O and that circular shape to kind of create an arrow field along with the messages there, and having a base that has a curve into it influenced by a water shape. So implying Olympia is referenced next to the water. And that shape kind of just gets followed through, so using more curves, simple shapes to sort of give an open welcoming feel rather than kind of harsher angles or things like that. And here's some examples of the signs in the environment. And then here's some of the three Ds. And again, as Anna indicated, you know, including areas where we can put interpretive signage to help tell stories of Olympia, history, culture, everything about it. So really, you know, these are just some more historical options, but you can really choose whatever you want. It's just the idea that we're showing here. And similar to concept one, including areas for the neighborhood identification, and again, changing of color. So the area within that circle could change based on whatever that neighborhood or area wants to identify. And this one also uses the medallion, so circular shapes that would go on the black pole that's there. And then again, the color getting changed even on the backside and using a name for that area on the backside. Concept three. Concept three was developed to clearly give, again, emphasizing a little bit of the water, but also sort of the welcoming feel, the curves, like nothing's to be harsh or to be not really feel wanted, really a place that felt welcoming and open. So that's one of the options we did here. And then it has sort of a break form, so the front is the message, and then on the side would be a neighborhood or area of the city. And maybe mainly focused with these would be like downtown or west side, those main areas. And then that curve really following through in different shapes to sort of have that curved element, that little swoop of the blue that creates a visual look that people will know you're still in Olympia. Here's some scenes. Three Ds, again, interpretives, and you can kind of get a better idea of how it shows up on the side of the sign there. And then lastly, just again, how the neighborhoods change. So here we would have areas on the side that artwork can be changed, based on the neighborhood that they're located in, really giving that neighborhood that ability to identify themselves and what works best for them, how they identify and show themselves. And then lastly, a similar medallion, sort of a tube piece that would go on this rectangle too.
Great. So those were the three options that we shown to stakeholders, and we put online on the Engage Olympia to get feedback. And so this is the feedback we got from them. Both the stakeholder meetings and the Engage Olympia chose the first concept. So for the stakeholders, the first concept got six votes, which was the most. And then for the Engage Olympia, the concept that was the lowest number was the preferred concept, so they were both in agreement on that. From there, we got some of the, just some of the feedback. Oh, sorry. So just some of the feedback, you know, this just kind of helped us kind of solidify that concept one was a good concept between all of the different groups that we showed it to. And then from there, we showed all of that to the CLIPS, and this is some of their feedback. So kind of as Kelly said, they liked concept one, like the shape, the form, some of the colors, and the organization of the information, but they really also liked concept three, the rounded edges, some of the waveforms, kind of how welcoming it felt. And they also liked the connection to water. Between both of those concepts, they liked some of the graffiti and vandalism determinant things that we talked about, like especially the interpretives. And they also liked the opportunity for art and sculptures, those kinds of things on the signs. They definitely did not like concept two, so that was not chosen by any of the groups that we showed it to. And then they also kind of felt concept one felt busy, so that was some of the stuff that we were tasked with when creating a new concept to show you all today.
Right.
So before we start, take a breath. And we like the challenge, and we always like, as designers, we always like to challenge to see if we can, you know, answer the challenge or the request of our clients or committee. And so this one challenged the team, and I liked it. And I liked how everybody hunkered down and came up with something. But don't, if you're obligated, but you can also have comments back. So I want everybody to just kind of take a breath, and Matthew, go ahead and show everybody where we ended up.
So this is concept four, the concept that was requested by CLIPS. So it combines the panel shape and kind of information structure of concept one, but we softened a lot of the edges and added in some of the shape forms along the top and bottom, but keeping it so that the information is organized in a similar way. We eliminated the double pole option. There was some concern about trash getting stuck in between the two poles. So we made it one pole that has a blue stripe going down the bottom, kind of further connecting like that water association. And then we also updated the base cap of the pole to just something that's a little bit more curved, a little bit more friendly and fun, and once again, something that's inspired by kind of water shapes. So this is showing the rest of the system, so keeping in with kind of concept one, similar forms, but just some of the updates made. And then showing it in scenes. And then in the three Ds, and showcasing some of those nice interpretives that could be put on the back. And once again, the neighborhood signage systems would kind of be similar, but just updated, kind of has that nice pole, the color in the pole could change as well. Some of the different art forms. And then the medallions with the color change for districts and neighborhoods.
Well, that was pretty much it.
So before we, so before we go into questions and comments, I just want to throw in my two cents of, I really liked how the challenge affected our office, and I loved how the last meeting with CLIPS really, you know, pushed us to think differently. And I love the resolution that came out of there. There's some really interesting things that did come out of it, and some exciting things visually. So as designers, and being a longtime designer and a design shop owner, I'm just like, wow, the push was great. And the design team really dug in and said, well, what can we do? One thing we hate out there is called Franken-signing, taking pieces from different concepts and trying to build something new. But sometimes we get some brilliant comments, and if we don't listen, you know, we're never going to get there, you know, we don't hear it. The mayor and Mayor Pro Tem really challenged us, and I hope you can see how it did. So that's enough for me. I'm going to open it up for questions, comments, and arrows, and we'll listen again. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. And I just have to say, I appreciate how receptive you all were to the criticism and the feedback we were giving you during our meeting in Community, Livability, and Public Safety Committee. So thanks for that, and it's good to see you back. Any questions or comments from council? I did have one clarifying point, which is that tonight we're discussing the wayfinding signage, and that the entrance signage has yet to be determined. We decided to table that until we get different. I almost said better, but different imagery. You know how I feel about it, it's no surprise. Councilmember Green.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
Hello, all of the Matthews. Very cool work. Thank you all for doing this. This is my first time seeing this, so I've got just a few questions, if you will entertain me. At the first meeting, so when you showed the rankings of some of the concepts, I couldn't help but notice that the numbers in that first one were quite low. How did you account for that in some of the follow-up engagements or communications? Or was it just like, the people who were there spoke, and that's where we were?
We invited a broad array of people, and we invited those same people to all of the engagements. So some, there was like a core people that did come, and then there were people who came to one, or the third one, or the second one. But we tried to make it as broad as possible. And also, I know that the team had interviews with people. They went out and did some deep interviews, interviewed members of council, and they can speak more to that than I can.
Yeah, correct. We did interview multiple people, and it's nice to see some of the council members who we did interview. So it's been a little bit, you know, local stakeholders and people who couldn't attend and things like that. So we did make time, we reached out, made sure everybody was aware of, you know, we had multiple meetings, like Kelly did say. So that last one where it got voted, it was a little bit smaller, but that was also, we worked with the Engage Olympia to address that additional, those additional pieces.
Awesome. Thank you. Next question, and this is going to be for Tangram. So I won't get too deep into the designs, because you've been through all of this many times. My only question, or I guess my only concern, is that if you show like that, the first slide of concept four, the light blue with white Olympia in white, the contrast on that feels pretty minimal to me, particularly if you're in a car, especially if it's like gray and rainy. Is there ways that with materials or something else could help increase that visibility?
Definitely, and we will work on that. Right now, it's just Definitely. Um, and we will work on that. Right now, it's just getting a concept direction. So like those things, we will take that comment um, and, and make sure to address that, that we already, that is one thing we're looking at is final color, final, once we get a concept, all final colors, final contrast, all those things will be um, finalized and developed um, after, after a concept direction is chosen. We will make sure that is addressed.
Awesome. And then last question, if I can. Uh, and this one, uh, Kelly, this is, it's kind of about what I assume to be the next phase of the project. When I look at like the medallions for, you're in the creative district, you're in the how do we make those relevant? Like what does that mean to somebody walking by on the street and being like, cool, I'm in the creative district, like?
Well, I don't want to speak for the creative dis- district, but the creative district uh, folks were in, were, did, were invited to the stakeholder and I know that they have had um, also pretty direct con- contact with the graphic art. And I said, this is the, this is a plan. We're just trying to get to a plan. So there's still a lot of questions to, to, to ask around. I know that, so I, I, I will leave that to working with the creative district because I don't want to speak for them um, a- about how, but, but, but we wanted to um, build, make sure that, that their work was um, thought about intentionally in this work, so.
Sure. And I don't want to imply it's not cool to be in the creative district, like it is.
Yeah.
What I just want to make sure is, is how do we really uh, communicate that or put that together in a way that someone looks at that sign and they're like, what does this mean? Like what interesting things can I do here that I can't do other places, so?
And, and there is some branding work going on around the creative district by the creative district folks. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, win.
Yeah. This one's for Kelly Green on the dais. Um, wow, you are supposed to be here, aren't you, on the dais with us? Um, because you are reminding us of uh, something that council has been saying um, for uh, the last few years is that um, you're familiar with the freeway signs. And so when you see a freeway sign off uh, uh, exit one oh five, there says, uh, there's this big beautiful sign that says uh, creative district, right? And then you get off the freeway, there's no other signs. And so this is a part, so for so long, there was uh, the mayor at the time and, and other council colleagues would say, okay, where are the rest of the signs? How do people even know how to get to it? And so this is part of that work, so helping kind of bridge that. So uh, you're not alone in your concerns. Your, your uh, comments uh, about the creative district are uh, well taken and um, this is part of that. And also there's another whole, you know, work group and, and work to do about realizing a creative district. And so I think right now we're getting the breadcrumbs off the freeway. So, thank you. I'm right there with you.
Great comment.
That's great. Uh, councilmember Madron followed by councilmember Gilman.
Thanks for the presentation. Uh, and thanks, Mayor, for um, you know, mentioning that the welcome signs come later because I was like looking through the presentation, like where are the welcome signs? I just have a, a quick comment and maybe I'm on my own in this, but when I see Center for Performing Arts, I don't think of the Washington Center. I think it's like more commonly known as the Washington Center, so maybe that's just me. Uh, but when I was just like, Center for Performing Arts, what is, oh, oh, it's the Washington Center. So that, that, that one stood out to me. And I'm also curious to seeing, I, I know these are just concepts. Um, but I see, you know, the reference to the state Capitol. Is that the Capitol building that, that is supposed to be referencing or?
Can, can I jump in? I, I think those are, those are not meant to be the actual signs. It's just the concept. So there's a separate work being done on nomenclature, like what things are going to be signed, what things are going to be called.
Oh, okay, good. Okay. Well, in, in that case then, um, you know, like I said, maybe, maybe I'm the only one here who doesn't think of the Washington Center with Center for the Performing Arts, but um, yeah. Um, but what, thinking about what the, what, what things are commonly known as.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's that work and I do believe in that, that the Washington Center is called the Washington Center, so.
Thanks. Councilmember Gilman.
I'm, I'm really pleased with the Concept Four and George, Anna, Matthew, thank you for your work, the continued work on this. And I, I just wanted, my, my understanding of the project that Kelly embarked on was, I mean, part of it's designing what shade of light blue and, and what things are called, but really it was, we have a mismatched set of multiple efforts at creating wayfinding over many years that are across town. And I think the, the project is to create a unified visual language so that people can navigate more easily and it looks more beautiful downtown. So I, that, I, so I think we're on the right track for creating this unifying visual language. And, and then I know there'll be room to look again about which specific locations are flagged and how they're labeled and, but thank you for your continued work. I, I'm excited that we're at this point.
And, and just to assure you on that, Public Works is deeply involved in this work and um, they're, they're the guide for where things might go and where, where it's safe and um, my, my evil plan is, once we have a design and a, and a plan, I'm just going to slip that right over to Public Works for whatever the future holds.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Um, any additional comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, so that, that brings up a, a question I'm thinking of. What is the timeline around this? Kind of broadly speaking.
And I think it is, it is, it is driven by budget and, and um, by phases. And there's the city manager. I think he might want to jump in on that.
City manager Bernie.
Yeah, thank you. So as we finalize the concept and we get a, the concept um, in place and then we also get the welcome sign kind of vision in place and get that concept nailed down, then we'll start to work through the transportation team to try to lay out kind of where all the signs need to go. And so we get kind of a sense of volume and where, and then we'll package all that together, develop, we have to develop some specs and other things and then we'll figure out how we bid that out and, 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 and then that'll give us some estimates that we can bid with. Then we'll have a, an idea and at some point in time, I will have to come back to council as we get further along. And we have kind of a price point that we think will get this work done, whether that's all at once or in phases. And I'll work through the council to work that into our budget process.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Scene nine. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, you have a motion.
Yes. Um, I'd like to move to approve uh, the signage designed concept for the city way, or citywide wayfinding master plan.
I'll second the concept of a plan.
I need a minute now.
And is this Concept Four?
Concept Four.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you and thank you all so much. Thanks for joining us tonight and thanks for your work. Good night. Okay, so that takes us to our next agenda item, six B, which is uh, the Civilian Police Auditor 2024 Annual Report. And uh, I'll be calling forward Assistant City Manager Stacy Ray, um, who will be followed by Deputy Chief Shelby Parker, uh, and then by Tara Parker, our police auditor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, um, good evening. For the record, I'm Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager. I have a very brief role tonight to introduce our speakers who will take us forward for most of the agenda this evening. Um, but let's see, to kick us off, I'm gonna go ahead and just reiterate that our purpose tonight is to receive a briefing on and discuss the Olympia Police Department's year-end review and also the civilian police auditor's annual report. So tonight, um, I'll provide a brief update in terms of where we are in implementing the community oversight of law enforcement recommendations. They came out of the Social Justice and Equity Commission. And then I will turn it over to Deputy, Deputy Chief Shelby Parker, who will provide the Olympia Police Department's year-end review, um, followed by, as you said, Mayor, our civilian police auditor Tara Parker, who will provide an overview of her 2024 annual report. I'll also mention that per the process that we've established, that um, um, Chief Rich Allen and the, and um, Ms. Parker have already presented to the community group. This year, we used our community use of force, two of our community use of force board representatives to provide input and feedback on both briefings, um, particularly though on the 2024 annual report from our auditor. And you'll see that the, their feedback was summarized and included in the letter that was included in your packet tonight. So you'll see the comments that they provided. So just a little bit about where we've been in terms of implementing the community oversight of law enforcement recommendations. So just want to acknowledge um, and welcome our staff liaison, who's Margot Morales, who's also here with us tonight, is our community engagement specialist. So Margot was hired and brought on board at the beginning of the year um, to support, you know, this body of work. And moving forward, she will um, be the one in front of you actually speaking to the auditor's work and liaising with the auditor, community policing board and also um, just as if she doesn't have enough to do, supporting our Social Justice and Equity Commission, so. Um, also just a reminder that we updated the Olympia Municipal Code, Chapter 2.38, around the duties, responsibilities, and qualifications of the civilian police auditor. And you also approved an update to Chapter 2.100 around community member advisory boards, commissions, and committees to update um, to transition from a community use of force board to a community policing board and uh, establish that board. You've selected and hired as a city council, a new civilian police auditor, that's the OIR group. And Margot's in the process of helping them transition onboard, um, almost as we speak. Um, and then pleased to announce, um, the recruitment is open for the new commis- excuse me, community policing board. So we have um, in addition to having several members of, that are currently community use of force board members move over to the community policing board, we have three vacancies for which the recruitment's been launched. And um, we'll be sharing some information with you about that, but for anyone listening tonight, it's currently open. The application's available online. It will be open until Friday, July 11th. Um, and again, we have three vacancies that we're recruiting for that board right now. That's a little bit about where we've been. Um, you know, quite a significant number of accomplishments, but that brings us to um, do tonight's presentation. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Deputy Chief Parker.
Just take a moment to get the presentation switched. But good evening, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. For the record, I'm Shelby Parker, Deputy Chief with Olympia Police Department. And this evening, I will briefly overview the Police Department's 2024 year-end staffing levels, crime and outreach service data, and use of force incidents. Perfect timing. Thank you. We closed out the year with a total of a hundred and six staff members in the Police Department, including seventy-one commission members and thirty-five non-commission members. Additionally, we had twenty-seven volunteers who assisted with community engagement, crime prevention, and special events. We had three canines, two patrol dogs, Bodie and Arco, and one community engagement dog, Bentley. We ended the year with six officer vacancies and two crew vacancies. This slide captures a large amount of work within the Police Department that is often overlooked. Staff fulfilled four thousand one hundred and forty-five public disclosure requests. These require significant staff time for redaction and fulfillment. This number does not include the reports that can be automatically generated through our online portal. Almost seven thousand incident reports were written and appropriately distributed. This number does not reflect the significant number of supplemental reports that are written under the same case number. We processed eight hundred civil orders, many of them requiring personal service in the community, over two hundred community engagement activities from touch a truck to the bicycle rodeo, almost fifty-five hundred crew contacts, and almost fifty-five thousand total calls for service. This very busy slide captures some crime data from 2024. The data band at the top reflects crimes against people and the bottom band reflects property crime. Robbery is down at sixty-one incidents. Many of these incidents resulted from the suspect using force while stealing from a business. Felony assaults are up from last year, though consistent with 2022 numbers. Misdemeanor assaults are consistent with past years. Forty-five percent of these misdemeanor assaults are related to domestic violence. Transitioning to the bottom band, which is property crimes, there was a significant reduction in auto thefts in 2024 at just two hundred and fifteen incidents. We believe our flock counters have significantly impacted this crime trend. Commercial burglaries are down. Some of these incidents resulted from a subject having been previously trespassed from a business and subsequently returning and committing theft. Residential burglary was also down in 2024. Sixty-two percent of these burglaries were DV-related, caused by the suspect entering a residence or location that they were prohibited from entering by a no-contact order. A note to the crime in Olympia, in 2025 in July, we will be piloting a proactive policing unit with our partners uh, from Lacey and Tumwater joining at some point. They will be focusing on significant regional crime trends, including felonious assaults, robbery, fraud, and trafficking in stolen property. Crisis Response Unit data. The table on the left captures how community members initiate contact with Crew. You'll see that Crew is most often dispatched by Thurston 911 Communications or T-COM, followed by Crew members initiating contact. The pie chart on the right shows that Crew interacted with the community seventy-one percent of the time by themselves and then twenty-nine percent of the time, co-response with a police officer. Use of force. The department had an increase of use of force in 2024 and I'd like to provide some additional context about the reported force that we've used. Excuse me. Sixty-five percent of the incidents, or eighty-five percent, involved a takedown, which is when an officer or officers overcome a subject's physical resistance by taking the subject to the ground. Takedowns are considered the lowest level of force. Seven incidents, or about ten percent, involve the deployment of an electronic control device, commonly known as a TASER. Four incidents, or five percent, involve defensive punches and or knee strikes. Three percent of the incidents, or four percent, involve control holds to place handcuffs on a subject. One incident involved lifting a subject to a standing position. Another involved an officer drawing their duty weapon and another involved using less lethal munitions. The auditor will address use of force in greater detail. Using force is not the desired outcome of any contact between our officers and the community. Officers regularly engage in de-escalation when it is safe and feasible, consistent with state law and policy. However, when officers must take a subject into custody and the subject does not comply, force may be required to effect an arrest. Out of nearly fifty-five thousand calls for service in 2024, two thousand nine hundred and fifty of these calls resulted in an arrest. Seventy-six of these incidents resulted in an officer using force. Thirteen of these incidents resulted in minor injuries, including minor cuts and abrasions. Each of these individuals received medical care for their injuries. Zero use of force incidents in 2024 resulted in substantial bodily harm or great bodily harm. I will turn the presentation over to City's auditor Tara Parker. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. I'm pleased to be with you to present the 2024 Annual Report. And I told somebody the city's gonna go through my slides when I say next, so start that now.
We're working on it right now, Auditor Parker. One moment.
Oh, that's okay. I appreciate the help.
Yep.
Okay, we're ready when you are.
All right. I'm ready for the slides. Thanks, Stacy. All right. So I'm gonna give a brief overview of the use force data entrants, the misconduct complaint investigations, and the recommendations. Next. As Deputy Chief Parker uh, already addressed, um, many of the details that- many of the details that are represented in this slide. And I also want to emphasize that the vast majority of the uses of force did involve takedowns, the very lowest level of force. Each of these incidents were audited or reviewed in a multi-level review within the department, and then thoroughly audited, and each were bound to the officer's conduct met standards. Next. Now, this slide presents the demographics of the subjects in use of force incidents. As you can see, the majority of these incidents involved white males. And I also want to highlight in the age graph that there were four juvenile subject, or three juvenile subjects. And that's a significant decline from 2023, where we saw nine. And the number nine was very concerning and indicated a sharp uptick and concern about a trend. And I think it going back down to three, which is typical of previous to 2023 years, is an encouraging number. Next. Also want to discuss these key trends. And I'm glad that Deputy Chief Parker already talked about this rise in the use of force incidents. It was a pretty substantial rise. In 2023, there were 52 incidents, and in 2024, 76. So that's a 46% increase. And I am purely speculating, but I think it's important to jump directly into that second significant key trend, which was that 56 or 74% of these incidents involved crisis conditions, by which I'm including where the subject appeared to be mentally ill and or under the influence of drugs or alcohol. And in each of those incidents, all of the information available, and particularly the body-worn camera, showed that these subjects did not respond to de-escalation efforts. I also want to point out that of these, there were 56 such crisis condition-type incidents. And that number is larger than the total number of use of force incidents in 2023. So I think it's worth considering the possibility that this rise in use of force incidents might be related to a rise of the number of community members who are experiencing crisis conditions and some of the factors around those conditions. Next. In the report, I also discussed three ongoing trends that even though I've reported on these in previous reports, I think they are no less key. And that is that the body-worn cameras just greatly enhance transparency, both for the department's internal reviews, for the auditor's reviews, and for any potential third party who might request that footage for any purpose. I also want to highlight that even though the racial disparity numbers that you can see in the demographics, there are disparities between the number of people of color in the community versus the representation in these use of force incidents. And that continues to be a serious, ongoing concern. Every file involving a subject of color gets additional layers of scrutiny for that purpose. And on page 17 of the report, I discuss the seven factors that are applied in an effort to discern bias. And in each of these incidents, I did not discern any bias whatsoever. And third, I want to highlight that the OPD has been consistently cooperative and responsive to any and all questions, concerns, suggestions. Sometimes they're little things, sometimes, you know, just larger things. I give some examples of these in the report. But I just want to really note that every step of the way, the department has always been extremely responsive to all of my inquiries and recommendations. Next. In turning to the misconduct complaint investigations, there were 14 such files in 2024. They all were determined to have met department standards. Of those 14, only one of those resulted in a sustained finding of misconduct. And in that case, it was a very low-level type of misconduct, inadequate performance due to a lack of training or experience. And that was addressed and remedied by providing that additional training. And again, I want to really emphasize the importance and value of the body-worn camera, not just in use of force, but also in misconduct cases. In 2024, half of these cases were disproved in whole, or at least in significant part, by what was clearly visible on body-worn cameras. Next. And finally, I included two ongoing recommendations. I want to note that these are things that I've recommended in the past and that the department's been very responsive. But I emphasize the importance of continued focus on these. First, enhancing de-escalation training. Again, talking about 74% of these use of force cases involved people with crisis conditions who did not respond to de-escalation. And I want to be clear, in some cases, there might not be any form of de-escalation. You know, if a person is actively involved in imposing imminent harm to themselves or others, things of that nature. But in some of these cases, some forms of verbal de-escalation or other methods may be helpful. And they may be different with individuals who are experiencing a mental health crisis or under the influence of drugs or alcohol. And additionally, and in a distinctive way, I wanted to emphasize the value of getting specific training related to de-escalation with juveniles. They have, well, scientists seem all to be in consensus that juveniles are oftentimes not operating with the same forms of reasoning that can be comparable to being impaired by drug and alcohol issues. And de-escalation with juveniles can be a very specific type of skill. In both of these categories of de-escalation, the department has actively endeavored to procure and engage in training. They've done a great job at finding trainings in the community, and they've committed to scheduling continued training in those areas. And so I would just really want to support those efforts. And then, second, and related in many ways, is to really enhance the tracking and information gathering related to how the department coordinates its efforts with crisis responders. Until this year, essentially, and I'm moving into 2025 with this, even though I could observe that crisis responders may be on the scene or discern somewhere in a report that there might have been a crisis responder, their actions and the timing and all of that was opaque because there was nothing in the department that would have called for that information. The department was very receptive to my request to get more formal in documenting that and has, I believe, for the last year into the present, the supervisors have been now including information regarding any crisis responder involvement. And the department is in the process of getting a new records management system. And they want to ensure that there is an embedded mandatory field so that officers will be specifically required to include that kind of information. And I'm of the belief that, you know, you can't do much with information that you're not tracking. So I think tracking these items will hopefully provide great opportunities for both teams, both the police department and the crisis responders, to learn from and get a better understanding of what has been most effective and where there's room for improvement. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tara. Any questions from council? Councilmember Gilman.
So this may be a question, Tara, for you or for Deputy Chief Parker. I'm not sure, but I'm interested in, first, in the, just the overall crimes that we were looking at. There were zero murders, and I don't, as I understand. And then I don't know where sexual assaults might show up or hate crimes, whether they're part of felony assaults or whether they're otherwise categorized.
That's the department question.
Mayor Payne and Councilmember Gilman, I adopted this presentation, so I will just own that. We did have homicides in 2024. I can follow up with you on the exact number. I did also notice that the sexual assault data was missing from the presentation and came prepared to speak about that. And so in 2024, reported sexual assaults were 8.4% above average, the five-year average. Now, when we take that five-year average and we break it down into population per 100,000, because we've seen some population increase over the years, we have 63.3 incidents in '24 compared to 58.8 incidents in 2015. So you see a difference there, but not as initially astonishing as we initially see it. So that does, it is something to pay attention to. I think also important is the clearance, what happens with these reports once they come into the police department. And so we have a clearance rate of 41%. And that breaks down to six investigations that are still active, 11 where arrests have occurred or been referred, three that have morphed into a different type of investigation, and 16 in which the leads have been exhausted. That can reflect a lack of continued cooperation by the parties involved, or we've been unable to pursue the investigation further.
Thank you. And I'm sorry that those weren't actually zeros, but I appreciate.
Yeah, it's tough knowing that there's real people associated with those numbers.
Absolutely. And Auditor Parker, I just wanted to thank you and to echo your good words about the Olympia Police Department's willingness to engage in your recommendations that's happened so far. And your recommendations especially aimed at minimizing hands-on with juveniles, I think, is really valuable. So thank you for your report and for the suggestions. And I share your praise for the implementation of your recommendations over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne. I have a question for each of you. So Deputy Chief, I think there's an obvious answer to this that I just don't know because I'm new on council. The marked increase in the crisis response numbers?
Yes.
Is that, did something change in crew in that year?
Yes, something did change. So very exciting. The council supported the addition of two crew members on foot in the downtown core. And so those two crew members engage in a lot of proactive engagements with folks in crisis in our community. And so that data, in combination with the existing mobile crew, results in that significant uptick in crew contacts. As well as, the program is still relatively new in the grand scheme of things, and we're improving our data tracking. So you'll continue to see the numbers increasing each year.
Thank you. And can you give me an example of what a self-initiated crew interaction is?
Absolutely. So a crew member walking downtown. They come upon somebody who's in crisis. They connect with them, offer services that are in the community, engage with them, see if they can help them find a place where they can be that might be more appropriate for their needs. So that would be in a self-initiated. We also did have a column of other that you'll see. It was in 2024 and not in 2023. And that was created to catch some of the points that we felt weren't covered in the other points. So an example would be a community member flagging down a crew member. That's not exactly self-initiated, but it's also not dispatched by TCOM.
And then Auditor Parker, you referenced, you know, this as a possibility or your supposition that the increase in, I'm going to use, I'm going to forget the words, so just bear with me, that some of the increases you saw in use of force, thank you, were potentially related to folks in crisis. Do you think those two things are at all connected?
It's hard to believe that they're not. And we sit with this data. It's not our intent to use force, and so it's tough. I would like to paint a picture and what use of force can look like. A law enforcement officer is dispatched to a big box store in our community for a subject that's actively engaging in theft. When law enforcement arrives and contacts the subject, they immediately flee. We have a choice at that point. Let them flee or hold them accountable. And in order to hold them accountable, unfortunately, we do have to put our hands on them. And we need to, more often than not, take them to the ground at that point. And so that's that quick moment in time when force may be used. And you can see that's not a moment where I can call a crisis unit responder and have them respond to the scene. And so it is tough to fit the crisis response unit into all aspects of incidents in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing none. I do have a few, and maybe it's whomever can take a stab at answering the questions. But I did see here on page 13 of the report, under Section C, under the additional key data, it talks about how there is 74% of incidents involved in subjects who appear to be mentally ill or impaired by alcohol or drugs. And I do understand that this is about de-escalation. But can you help me understand, like, why isn't that data separated based on mental health response versus substance abuse? Because they're very different in my mind.
They are different. They are separated in the way the police department reports the information. I would defer to Ms. Parker to answer regarding her report.
Yeah, and they do come, well, they're, sometimes it's clear from reading the reports and observing the body-worn camera that the subject's conduct could be attributable to mental illness, drug or alcohol influence, or both. These officers are making these determinations, you know, in a very intense, fast-moving situation. These are not clinical diagnoses. They're not testing people for drug and alcohol use when they indicate that on their forms. So, and I think that's important to note. It's not like there's some follow-up that verifies that an officer's impression that this person suffered from mental illness was clinically correct. Sometimes officers do not indicate something like that. But when I watch the body cam, where I see what happens when the individual was taken to St. Joe's after, it becomes obvious. Or you see in the list of seized property that there is a bunch of recently-used drug paraphernalia and that the conduct matches intoxication, but the officer did not necessarily indicate that on the report. The officer might not have known that at the time. So it is not, when I count these things, I'm looking at an individual who did not respond to de-escalation efforts, responded in a way that, as a layperson, and I think a reasonable officer would observe to be a person who is probably has diminished capacity. The source of that diminished capacity is sometimes just a matter of speculation. So I do want to make it clear that 74% includes all of that. all of that type of case. The remaining 26%, this is a person who seems to have their wits about them and just isn't going to cooperate. And there's nothing else in the file that indicates that there's mental illness or intoxication involved. But these are not technical determinations. I hope that answers your question.
Kind of sort of, but I, you know, for me.
I can't hear you.
I understand that there could be some overlap where, you know, he's a person that's suffering from.
I'm, pardon me, Mayor, I cannot hear your audio.
I'm sorry. Wow, I haven't done that in a long time. So I understand that there may be some overlap between those who are suffering from mental illness and also abusing substances. But, and you'll hear me say this for my additional questions too, but if we really want to get at the why, it's kind of hard to determine, like, what are the causes that we need to be addressing to prevent these issues in the community if they're being tracked all as one data point? I guess I would express that as a concern. Because I think a lot of what I'm seeing here is the numbers of the state of what's going on in our community. But I really would like to know the why. And I think in order to fulfill our our goals in the reimagining Public Safety Plan, we have to really start knowing the why. And I have more on that in just a moment. Just let me find my next question. So you made a, you showed that slide, Auditor Parker, of all the different demographics. And I noticed that the black men in particular were the ones that had the highest rates of use of force compared to all other races. And I guess, you know, again, is there a way of knowing the specific behaviors that lead to those incidents? Is it, does it start out as a situation where it's burglary or robbery, and you could make assumptions that there's an economic issue, right? We speak about these things in generalities, but we don't have data to actually support what's happening in our community. And for me, I look at that and I say, there's a reason, right? And I, unfortunately, without that information, I think that people just tend to think of, you know, this idea that we're inherently criminal, right? And there is a why behind it. And so, you know, I really would like to dig in more and understand what is happening. And again, in order to fulfill the goals that we want to accomplish in reimagining public safety, we have to know that. And I would say the same is true for, even with Deputy Chief, you just mentioned our sexual assault data that has gone up in 2024 from the 2015 numbers. And I would ask the same question, do we know why sexual assaults are up? What's going on? What's the conditions in our community that could be contributing to that or not? And then also, I had one final question about, in terms of demographics, is people with disabilities, do we know, do we track the, any law enforcement encounters with people with disabilities? And I also see under our training section that our officers, you know, as of recommended training for ASL, for folks that are hearing impaired or deaf. And I would ask, you know, what kinds of trainings are available for other disabilities? And how are officers engaged with disabled persons?
Well, I'll start, but I'd also like to hear Deputy Chief Parker speak to this. The, the questions of the whys and the context, the information included in the use of force files presently doesn't answer those questions well, and sometimes doesn't answer those questions at all. There is no specific tracking of disability. A person who is perhaps deaf or blind or in a wheelchair or something like that, it would be apparent, but it's not tracked. There isn't a specific field in the forms. I think a lot of these questions maybe could be addressed. I mean, the department, obviously, is best to speak to this and the new auditors to look at with the new records management system, you know, what are some ways to really enhance that data gathering and that tracking? So that the use of force files, they get audited, can help provide more context and more of those answers. But the data that comes in presently doesn't really provide an opportunity to get to that information.
And I'll add, the data that's being passed on to Tara is based on our processes, what was supposed to be provided to Tara. The police department is peeling the onion, trying to look at trends and understand what's going on, what's driving them. And so Mayor Payne, I can follow up with you with some of that data. I don't have it in front of me, but I do have it.
Sure, thank you. And I wouldn't expect you to, right? These are questions I'm asking you right now. I appreciate it that you'll follow up. But it is, it's more so me sharing my thoughts. I don't expect all the questions to be answered tonight. But I do wonder, like, how are we supposed to accomplish these goals if we don't actually know causes? And so I just appreciate everyone's work in helping us get there. I know it's going to take some time, but we'll get there, especially with the new system we have. So any additional questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I appreciate your questions, Mayor Payne, because that's kind of putting myself on a track mind of thinking about, how does, how do these causes, how do these conditions compare to the use of force in other cities that have tried to work on programs like this? Because understanding the why, you know, we can make assumptions, but understanding why, to your point, I think will be how we can understand where we go from here in policy. And I think that, just even looking at what other, I'm always, when I think about these things, I think, what is different about our area, our region, and our state and our city compared to other cities of similar sizes when they're trying to do this stuff, right? Trying to really, like, cross-hatch the information to figure out why this, why something would reoccur again and again. So, yeah.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, well, just gratitude to all of you. Auditor Parker, thank you. Again, as Councilmember Gilman said, obviously, you've had quite a few solid recommendations that have gotten us to a very good place in terms of where we are as a city and as our police department continues to work with you in support of your recommendations. I think it's a testament to the united front and vision that we have for Olympia, and I thank you for being a part of that. My understanding is that this may not necessarily be your last time in front of us, but we're getting quite close to that point. So I'll just say now, in case we don't see you again. But I really appreciate your efforts in getting us here. And thanks for always making an attempt to answer my questions that you don't always necessarily anticipate. So thanks for that. And I'll turn it back over to Stacy, if you have any questions or comments.
No, that's it for this evening. I would also just echo the gratitude to our Auditor Parker for your work on the annual report. And again, just a thank you to our two community use of force representatives that also received the briefing and had the opportunity for, you know, about an hour for a really great discussion with both Ms. Parker and Deputy Chief Parker and Chief Fallon as well, to be able to dig in and do the thing we hope the community members do, which is asking those clarifying questions and providing that community perspective. So just want to acknowledge their contributions too.
Thank you. All right, well, Auditor Parker, we'll let you get on with your evening. You have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was just a briefing on the annual report, so we have no action on that item. So we will move on to our next agenda item, which is item 6C on our agenda, which is the approval of a resolution authorizing the funding recommendation of the Cultural Access Advisory Board for the 2025-2026 Inspire Olympia contracts. And we have Mary Grace Godu, who is the program manager for our Inspire Olympia program, joined by Melissa Mead, who is the Chair of the Cultural Access Advisory Board, here to address us and present this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Payne and City Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Kelly, for getting our presentation going. And I'm with Melissa Mead tonight, who's the Cultural Access Advisory Board Chair. For the record, my name is Mary Grace Godu. I'm the program manager for Inspire Olympia. I'm going to have Melissa introduce herself and share the first couple of slides covering just a recap of the program and our program goals, and talk about the review process that helped us arrive at the recommendations you'll be looking at tonight. Thank you, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and council members. I'm Melissa Mead, Dean of Humanities and Arts at South Puget Sound Community College, and I am delighted to be here representing CAB tonight. So as a refresher for the public and anyone new to Inspire Olympia, Inspire Olympia works to strengthen public access to cultural programming with grants to local cultural organizations that are funded by revenue from our local sales tax. Olympia's Cultural Access Initiative was approved by voters in 2022, excuse me, and beginning in January 2023, one-tenth of 1% of our local sales tax is now dedicated to a cultural access fund, affected for a period of seven years, after which it can be reauthorized by a vote of the city council. The Cultural Access Advisory Board, the CAB, was created in 2023 to advise city council on the procedures for carrying out the goals of Inspire Olympia and to ensure that cultural access tax revenues are invested based on the priorities and the commitments made to voters. This is our mission statement, developed in 2023, which you can read. And let's see, in 2020, 2023, the CAB developed these funding goals for cultural access. They are the essential outcomes necessary to achieve our mission, and they are the basis for the evaluation and the scoring system we use to select organizations and award funding. Proposals have been scored based on the extent to which they address these goals in the areas of programming merit and value, community engagement and impact, equity and inclusion, youth programming, and capacity and feasibility. Applications for Inspire Olympia were opened from mid-January to mid-March of this year. Two panels were formed to review applications, and each six-person panel include CAB members plus additional community volunteers. Panelists individually reviewed and scored applications and spent additional time in group discussion, spending upwards of 20 hours per person. And here I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank community member volunteers on the panels, Genevieve Kenseko Chan, Lynn Reed, Britt Baumann, Leila Cross, and Shyla Rat. And on behalf of CAB, I'd also like to thank our, the staff members, Mary Grace Godu and Amelia Leighton, who are amazingly organized and keep us focused and mission-driven. Panelists were asked to identify any conflicts of interest and were recused from scoring or discussing those applications. The full CAB then met and deliberated on funding award amounts using the review panel scores only, without seeing the individual applicant names. Funding levels were set on, based on logistic qualitative cutoff points and the funding available in our program budget. 60 applications were considered for funding.
Awesome. Thank you, Melissa. This pie chart summarizes Olympia's commitment to voters for the allocation of cultural access funds as put forth in the 2022 initiative, ballot initiative that was passed by voters. A minimum of 80% of our revenues will go directly to cultural organizations. Up to 10% may be used for transportation costs for students, and 10% is allocated for administration. Our project, our projected income for 2025 is $3.1 million from the cultural access tax. To remind you, whoops, oh, thanks. As a reminder, Inspire Olympia offers two funding pathways. The comprehensive funding pathway is a two-year contract for up to $75,000 per year that's open every other year. And tonight, we're talking about the Impact Funding Pathway, which is open to applicants every year. They can apply for up to $30,000 in funding. And it's a one-year contract, so you'll see us every year bringing this recommendation to you. Once approved, these contracts for services will begin on July 1. The recommendation you'll hear about tonight also includes an amount to be allocated for cultural access programming in the schools, which we're required by law to include. And we're required to fund transportation to get those kids to all these great activities. In our first year so far, we've reimbursed OSD, the Olympia School District, for 119 bus trips for Inspire activities and field trips for over 5,000 students from every elementary and middle school, which is pretty cool. In addition to funding transportation, Inspire Olympia's cultural access programs for the schools provides an additional reimbursable amount on top of the baseline contract amount that organizations receive to those who host field trips. And this means that between the transportation funding and the hosting organization being funded, all these field trips are offered at either reduced cost or free for Olympia School District kids. This is a quick summary of the applicants, the 60 applicants who were scored for funding and for the recommendations you'll see tonight. 24 are new this year to Inspire, 28 provide youth programming, at least four offer field trips, and 20 are fiscally sponsored, fully one-third. The 60 applicants are an array of local organizations who celebrate minority groups, serve at-risk youth, engage senior citizens, and bring our community together in curiosity and exploration, making Olympia a friendlier and more lovable place to live. The total combined request from these organizations was for 1.6 million. But to stay within budget, the Cultural Access Advisory Board is recommending that we not spend more than 1.3 million on this cohort in the coming year. And this is how that spending sits in our budget. At 1.3 million, the Impact contracts will take about 42% of the projected annual revenue from the cultural access tax. Taken together with the commitment we've already made for those two-year contracts for the second year, that takes us to about 81% of the income for the year. So we meet that 80% direct funding level. And we actually add a margin when we reimburse for field trips. So it's going to come out to closer to 84% to 85% going directly to our cultural organizations. The green line in the middle of this little spreadsheet is the recommended spending level for the programming for the schools at $375,000 or 12% of the cultural access income for the year. That's broken out below under the second green line, so you can see that there's sort of three main components to that. The transportation reimbursement to the schools, the field trip hosting reimbursable level, and then funding for a coordinator position to grow this work, because it's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot to do. You'll notice that the 2025 expenses are showing 105% expenditure of the cultural access fund for the year, which is very intentional. The plan is to begin to gradually spend down the cultural tax revenue, cultural access tax revenue that was earned, that was gathered in that first year before we started funding, before we started our first funding cycle. So we've got a bit of a reserve. And the plan is to spend it down gradually over the remaining five years of the program. And this will ensure that Inspire Olympia continues to be a reliable resource for funding the arts in our community, given the many funding uncertainties facing cultural organizations, especially in the next few years. especially in the next few years. Melissa's back.
Okay, so the recommendation of the Cultural Access Advisory Board is to award funding based on the scoring done by the review panels, as shown on this slide. Proposals scoring 70% and above to receive 100% of their funding, requested funding. Those scoring 60 to 69 to receive 75%. Those scoring 50 to 59 to receive 50%, and those scoring less than 50 are not recommended for funding in this cycle. The CAB believes that this outcome is fair and generous in the right places. It will fund half the applicant organizations at their full ask. It recognizes organizations that put in real effort, put in real effort into planning strong programs that engage the community, and still offers support to organizations who have room to improve their programs relative to the Inspire Olympia funding goals. We also support the allocation of the CAPS program.
So this is the list, I'm sorry, this is the list of the 2025 applicants and the award amounts. All applicants have been informed about this recommendation, and official award notices are poised to go out following your action this evening. Every award letter will include a summary of comments and notes from our reviewers, and encouragement to contact staff for additional feedback and input. And we're committed to helping organizations to put forward strong applications for Inspire and to build their organizational skills. We offer workshops and one-on-one support timed with the application window, and our budget also includes funding to support capacity-building workshops and training and topics that are relevant for our nonprofits in Olympia. Congratulations to these organizations. They put in hard work. They have great things planned for our community, and kudos to our community for supporting them through this tax measure. We are available for your questions.
Thank you, Mary Grace. All right, any questions from council? Councilmember Green.
Hi, friends. First off, just kudos on this process. Your, you know, just laser focus on the mission of these funds and the clarity and consistency that you were able to apply that awarding, I just think was fantastic and takes so much. There's no room for someone to say anybody was favored or disfavored or whatever. So anyway, just thank you for that. I just have one question. Is there any consideration in, when you look at these funds, of organizations or programs that may also be getting other city funds, like LTAC or any other programs? Is that information looked at at all?
No. LTAC is this completely separate program that's intended to support tourism in Olympia. It's a different set of funding goals. There are, there is overlap. There are organizations who do receive both.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from council? Councilmember Gilman.
I was just going to ask the mayor pro tem, maybe as chair of the committee, if you might describe. We actually did have a fairly lengthy and robust conversation about this recommendation last week. Would you speak to it, please?
Yeah, thanks so much. I don't remember that. It's been a really long day. I really appreciate your presentation. I know we have had it. I think sometimes when we sit, and some of us are quiet during this, not just for Inspire Olympia, but for other presentations, you know, we never just have a presentation one time and then make a vote and move on it, right? And so we have city council committees, and I guess I'm saying this for the benefit of those listening, is that we all sit on different committees, and sometimes this is the second, sometimes third time we've seen something. I was privileged to see the police auditor, the last item. You know, I saw that in early May, so I asked all my questions there, you know. So we did have a really robust conversation, and we dug in, we asked a lot of questions about this. We asked if there were opportunities to, in future, see what alignment we have with the lodging tax program, not because the separate goals aren't important, but just about streamlining processes and what could be learned there. If there is anything additional, I'd certainly, certainly welcome committee members to, to share their, their sort of statements, but I just want to be upfront that we had a great presentation. We appreciated meeting with both of you so much, and I don't remember.
I was gonna help save you, but Clark or Councilmember Gilman beat me to it, so. Any additional questions from council? Councilmember Gilman.
I just want to add a little bit, and that's to ask you, we, we had wondered about the people who either didn't receive funding or received partial funding, and what sort of opportunities there were for them to receive feedback, and what sort of training or orientation there was. For many of these organizations don't have paid staff, they're, they're growing, several are under a fiscal sponsor. Could you just speak to a little bit about how you're cultivating these arts, culture, heritage, STEM organizations to reach this capacity?
There's a couple of different parts to answering that. One is that there's those two different funding pathways, and that is a very intentional equity strategy, to create a pathway that has a little bit of a lower bar, that has a lower funding amount. Those in the impact category, we're addressing, we're scoring for feasibility, capacity and feasibility, rather than a really hard look at their budget, for instance. We're looking at the budget, but the scoring is about feasibility. Can they pull off this thing that they're talking about doing? So there's different ways in which our scoring, also in addition to having a different category, so they're not competing against, smaller organizations are not competing against larger, more sophisticated organizations, we're also giving them a little, a little more grace, okay? And we're allowing the fiscal sponsorship model, which is not the case in the comprehensive funding model. So that's the first part of the answer, is that we're separating into two pathways specifically for that reason. And then the second part of the answer is about training and workshops and one-on-one availability, and we do all of that. Some of it's timed to the application window, and some of it's year-round. We have a good chunk of money in our budget moving forward each year for what we're calling inspired and connected, and it's going to be a series of opportunities. Some of them might be panel discussions, some of them might be, we're going to try to really bring in local experts, people who live and work in this community, to talk to our funded organizations. Sometimes they'll be open to the public, to any organization, not just Inspire organizations, to learn about ways to be a stronger nonprofit, providing these services in Olympia.
Can I, can I? I have one thing, too. We, we, and when I say we, I mean they, also looked at patterns in the applications for, to see where there were areas of development, which I thought was a really great equity strategy as well, to see where there's board development work that needs to happen, board diversification work, you know, all of that kind of stuff, and then, you know, can work with organizations that way as well.
Thank you for adding that.
Sure. Any additional questions or comments? All right, I'll just say it again. Thank you, as I did in committee, thank you, because I know that there is, it felt really fast, like you came back in front of the committee. It felt like that year went really quick from when you did the one year, and now you're here for the two-year contracts. But I know that for you all, this is work that happens all throughout the year, and it's not like people just apply and, and they, they don't have any work to do on their application. It's great, and it's perfect, and it goes right through. I know that there's a lot of work going into supporting folks, so we're helping them to help us. And all of these diverse organizations are what makes Olympia Olympia. So thank you for being a big contributor to what is really the livability and the pride of our city. So, thank you. So with that, Councilmember Green has the motion.
I would move to authorize the funding recommendation of the Cultural Access Advisory Board for the 2025-2026 Inspire Olympia contracts. Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, thank you. So we do have one more agenda item, and then we also have council reports following. So at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and after which we will reconvene. It is now 8:00 PM. Okay. So, we are back. So, we'll go ahead and return to our agenda. Item six D, which is the approval of the job description for the Assistant to the City Council position. And we have our Human Resources Director, Manny Bosser, presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Payne and City Council.
So, for the record, Manny Bosser, Director of H.R., and my pronouns are he/him/his. And I am before you this evening, seeking approval of the Assistant to the City Council job description. And if we approve, this will be a brand-new position. Wages and benefits, though, are already included in the adopted 2025 budget. And I'd like to provide a little background. So, during our budget development process last year, we identified the need to provide additional support to council. And so, this was, in part, the result of a growing set of demands on your time needs, and the need to more equitably distribute work among existing staff. So, in light of that, City Manager Bernie asked me to work with you folks to develop a job description. So, our process was fairly straightforward. So, we had individual meetings with council members this past spring, and the intent of the meetings was essentially to identify key needs, interests in the position, as well as ideal qualities in a preferred candidate. So, this is what we learned. So, this is a summary, right? This does not include the entire content outlined in the job description, but rather a summary. So, common themes and needs and interests included: administrative support for calendars, email management, coordination of meetings, anticipating the needs of council, drafting correspondence, research, and related duties. And in terms of the ideal candidate qualities: administrative support, experience, knowledge of the city of Olympia, customer service and diplomacy skills, strong presentation and communication skills, the need to build and maintain work relationships, and commitment to city values. And as a reminder, those core city values are compassion, integrity, and effectiveness. So, drafted a job description. We circulated that a couple different times, further refined it, and now, we're seeking your approval of the job description. We anticipate that this will be in the neighborhood of about $165,000 a year. That's salary plus benefits. And again, that's already included in the adopted budgets. We're not asking for new money. If council approves, our next steps would include H.R. preparing the description for posting. I anticipate, if you approve tonight, that we'll post this by Monday afternoon. We'll post the position using a variety of sources, internal, external, and, of course, using word-of-mouth, and essentially doing our best to attract a strong candidate pool. We anticipate posting for three weeks. Our commitment is that our screening and interview process will be fair and equitable, and anticipate, depending on sort of calendar and availability, actually interviewing in early to mid-July. That's what I have for you folks. Certainly open to answering questions.
Wow. You might be, is it not like city history for like shortest presentation?
And I felt that was a little wordy.
Thank you, might be up there. That's a good thing, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Before I call on Councilmember Green, I do just want to mention that tonight's discussion is not really about wordsmithing the job description, but rather, let's discuss the substance, unless there is specific wording that really is just giving you heartburn. Let's just try to keep it focused on the substance. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thanks, Manny. This looks awesome. I'm afraid that $165,000 number is going to be very misleading for some folks. Can you clarify what you anticipate the salary range to be?
Certainly. I anticipate the salary range will be in the neighborhood of 120 K to 165 K. So, if you look at that 120 K plus our benefit package, that the estimate is 165 K.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Green.
Sorry, I have a follow-up to that, because that honestly surprised me a little bit. How does that compare to some of the other assistant roles at the city?
So, it is consistent with our classification role and level mapping that we just implemented this past year. And so, it is consistent. Now, again, as candidates, preferred candidate is identified, there may be some flexibility in terms of the actual job offer, right, depending on skills, abilities, experience.
Thank you. Any additional questions? City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, I just wanted, maybe Manny can answer this better than I, because I just want to get at maybe some of the context of Councilmember Green's position, is that not all of our support positions or admin positions are created equal. So, there are different job classifications within our admin support positions based on the level of work they perform. So, I don't know, Manny, if you want to expand on that, because I think that's really what you're getting at, you know, to some extent, if I'm reading you right?
Yeah, I'm happy to clarify a little bit. Yes, that is some of what I'm getting at. The other thing I'm getting at is when I think about folks who are already at the city in executive assistant roles or E.A. roles, is this going to suddenly jump them? Or like, where does this fall in that grand scheme of things?
No, it will be consistent with current job classifications at the city. That could be that you have internal interest in the position, and so, somebody may apply, and the end result may be, in fact, a promotion. But I think it's very consistent with our current practices in terms of support for various departments and directors.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Mayor Potem, when?
Yeah, I just want to recognize all the work that went into this one, including that of colleagues we had formed. Thank you, I think all council members recall this, but we had formed at our last retreat sort of committee of council members that would be working on this. That would be myself, the mayor, and Councilmember Madrone, and looking at those skills and abilities. And then, also, to the mayor's point of wordsmithing, we smithed. We sure did. And all along the way, Manny put up with us, and then corralled us, right, as cats. Okay, what's your final look on this? So, I just really appreciate this position that we have been really asking for, and broadly asking for council support, is just really being taken seriously, and I just appreciate everyone's support in getting us this support position. So, I'm really glad that this is where it is now, and I just want to lift up all the hands that sort of, as I got it there.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo that. I appreciate your support of the subcommittee that we put together to form this position description. I know that, you know, much of council's thoughts and input was along similar lines. And so, in that sense, I think we know the kind of support that we've needed for quite some time. So, I am happy to be at this point where we're getting the support that we need. And it's my understanding that we haven't had an assistant that supports the council directly since prior to the last economic recession, if I understand that to be correctly. So, it's really good to be in this place where we can do that. And I know that we are, again, in some tough budget times, but having at least one person that's going to support seven people will enable us to hopefully do our jobs more efficiently as well. And so, I appreciate you being part of that to get us to this point, Manny.
Thank you.
So, with that, Councilmember Madrone has a motion.
I move to approve the job description for the Assistant to the City Council position as proposed by the City Council Subcommittee.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right. So, that concludes our business items for tonight. So, we will move on to council reports, and I'll begin with the mayor's report. Just a few things that I've done since the last time that we've met. I've done, met with the Executive Director, Desiree Freeland, of the Olympia Downtown Alliance, and it was a great opportunity to catch up with her in her new role as Executive Director of the O.D.A. And we discussed quite a few things: the upcoming Love Olly Summer Fest event, the conditions of downtown, both positive and negative, and how we might address those things. And really, just expressing gratitude to the O.D.A. for their partnership with us. They have certainly done quite a bit to expand our efforts as a city, and so, we appreciate their support in doing that, whether it's through the Downtown Guides Program, which used to be here within the city with our ambassadors, or whether it's hosting the community events, or putting lights and flower baskets up in downtown. They've contributed significantly, and we appreciate them. I also attended the Elected Officials Council Breakfast with the City Manager for the South Town Military Communities Partnerships Breakfast. And there, we were able to briefly meet with the Colonel of our Connector Unit, the Seventh I.D., and it was really great to just be in a room full of familiar faces, but also some new ones, and to get a significant update on legislative priorities. Some of those things have to do with things like the Nisqually Bridge project, which S.S.M.C.P. has been a significant contributor in advocating for dollars to fund that project, and they succeeded again. And also, interestingly enough, there were some brief conversation on how JBLM is really focused on looking at the energy grid, and how we might protect the grid, is something that is of national security interest for the base. And so, it was interesting to hear a little bit about that, as well as some other priorities around housing and childcare, which remain to be significant priorities for the base as well, and the surrounding communities who support them in those efforts. So, they were thankful for what we have done. I don't always think that the housing work that we do here at the city, we don't always necessarily connect those dots to veterans and active-duty families, but the work that we're doing supports those who are serving our nation. So, they were thankful of that. I attended the Thurston County Mental Health and Veterans Court Celebration of their 20 years of having those programs. I know that there's a lot of talk about what kinds of alternative programs the county has, and I will just say that it was really great to be able to see some testimonials from folks that have benefited from the programs they have there at the county. It was also interesting to hear a statistic that Thurston County is the first in our state to have a Veterans Court, and I believe, at the time that we instituted it, the eighth in the nation. So, it was great to hear some of the testimonials from some of the graduates of their court, and how they've transformed their lives. So, I thank the county for the invitation to attend. I also attended the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Festival, and it was really great to go there. And immediately when I got there, I was thrown onstage, and, oh, the mayor's here. And I even got to dance a little bit. I got to write, or attempt to write, in Chinese. I got to attempt to use chopsticks. I wore a turban on my head, you know, for our Indian community members, and took some photos. Oh, no, Jay is holding up, I think, what looks like either a picture or a video of me dancing, you know, with folks. And I just really appreciated the warm welcome that I felt immediately walking in the door of folks, and that was really encouraging to know that our council is supporting that community, and those communities are supporting our council, and that was very evident that they're grateful. So, it was wonderful to celebrate them. And then, I also attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, annual ceremony, at the Capitol Rotunda as well, and I thank the Thurston County Veterans Council for the invitation and to host that event again for another year. Also attended the, did the Welcome Figure shop visit with the City Manager, and with Councilmembers Madrone and Gilman, and also with Stephanie Johnson, our program manager for the arts, as well as Kathy Dorgan, the Chair of the Arts Commission. And I have to tell you that the piece is off to a great start. I have no idea how someone has that kind of talent, but she does. And I'm looking forward to finishing, seeing the finish of that product. It was wonderful to see it in the middle of it, in the middle of the work. I also attended the Housing Justice Forum on racially restrictive covenants at the county with Auditor Mary Hall, who hosted that event. I found out some very interesting things. I've learned a lot from attending that forum, and also, I'm really interested in how the city can support the county's efforts in that, whether it's through outreach for people to know more about that program. And one of the concerns I wonder if people have is the concern around, well, why would we want to move, remove racially restrictive covenant language from a housing deed? Because that can seem like erasing history. And the idea is that it wouldn't necessarily erase history, but it would prevent that language, racially restrictive language, from being in a deed on the sale of a property going forward. So, that's the idea of, you know, utilizing that program to have that sort of language stricken from your property deed, which refers to minorities as all sorts of racial slurs, specifically in Thurston County's language. So, it was great to hear what the county's doing to address that, and they found, they initially started out with a small number of properties, but now, they're up to something about around 1,700 that they have found that have these covenants, and they know that there are more. So, I look forward to thinking, brainstorming of how we might support the county in that There is also, I attended the proclamation earlier today at the county, and again, I just want to thank the board for the invitation to come and say a few words, and also, just grateful to them as our colleagues for recognizing Pride Month in Thurston County. And then, lastly, I just want to remind everyone and the public that we have a joint meeting with the Squawson Island Tribe at Anthony's at 5:30 P.M. on Thursday, June 5th. And that is my report, and I'll start to my right with Councilmember Madrone.
Jay, let's make sure that whatever photo you got there gets into the end-of-the-year PowerPoint presentation. PowerPoint presentation. So on, I've got a few things to report. On May 23, the Thurston Conservation District, along with Grub, hosted a garden build at the Evergreen Vista Apartments. This is managed by Mercy Housing and their staff are there. Councilmember Gilman was there, I was there, over 40 people showed up. It was really great. Evergreen Vista is where some families have been, have found a new home through World Relief and so there were some families who are new to our community who joined the garden build and there were also folks from the Union Gospel Mission who came to volunteer and there was even a crew of folks who were there because they work in a place where they're encouraged to get out and volunteer in the community. So they came out as well. So it was a really great community building event, garden building, food growing and look forward to more of that. The evening before that, on the 22nd of May, the Land Use Committee met and we, I think this was our second bite of the apple for the Land Use Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan and we'll get one more bite later on. The staff are taking good care with this one to make sure there's some pretty, you know, big changes. Some of it is moving things around, like moving all the housing and climate stuff into their own chapters. But we did like an overall review, overall feedback. It hasn't yet made it through the Planning Commission or the Social Justice and Equity Commission for their recommendation yet and after then it will come back to the Land Use Committee, so I'll save the juicy stuff for after that happens. We also talked about tenant screening options and so as staff had proposed some policy options for us to consider, they kind of framed them as setting guidelines so that the screening practices that we see in Olympia aren't overly restrictive. And they also talked about how there's two like overall approaches. They've done a lot of research in terms of what happens in other cities and one is to set limitations, like you cannot discriminate, you cannot deny somebody housing because of, you know, this specific thing. And then another set of policies that cities have enacted have to do with individual assessments, like looking at somebody's complete picture and providing them an individual assessment. The staff recommendations did fall more along the lines of setting limitations, of setting those guidelines, because cities that do individual assessments tend to have greater staff capacity for enforcement and a Human Rights Commission to be able to assess whether or not somebody was discriminated against and we just don't have that and we don't have the capacity for that. And we, as a committee, asked staff to also, you know, we've asked them to bring it all to us in a study session, but also consider what an education and outreach approach looks like. A lot of the things that they touched on, and I'll get into that in a second, are already identified in federal fair housing law as discriminatory practices. There's case law that staff looked into in terms of where, you know, for example, overly restrictive criminal background screening leads to disparate impacts. And so there are some areas of screening policy where it could, you know, potentially already be illegal. So do we need to do something further here in the city of Olympia? Or can we do some education and outreach with both landlords and tenants to help people understand what discriminatory practices could look like, even if we don't necessarily think of that in that way? That being said, staff also highlighted that there was a federal executive order around disparate impact liability, which could also erode those protections. So just something to think about as we, you know, continue these conversations. And I won't get into the nitty gritty of each of these, it was a very, the presentation was chock full of information, I will just say that. But the areas of screening policies that we looked at included criminal history, credit history, rental history, and specifically evictions and the use of a social security number, requiring somebody to provide a social security number to access housing. So all of this will come to the full council as a study session. We did ask staff to focus on the approach of setting limitations, since that is more what we would have capacity for as a city, but also to bring forward and options in terms of what does it look like to do education and outreach with landlords and tenants around, you know, what discriminatory practices in each of those categories looks like. This will also come forward once again with the rent to own, sorry, income ratios, rent to income ratios, gosh, the rent to, rent to income ratios that we've already reviewed because that's also a screening practice. The Land Use Committee recommendation is still to advance what we had discussed previously on the rent to income one, because that is one that stops somebody from even being able to apply for housing. And, you know, I would also, you know, we didn't make a formal recommendation in land use, but I would also ask us to consider requiring the use of a social security number to be able to access housing. There are other forms of identification that can be used to prove identity. It doesn't have to be a social security number, but we are a sanctuary city and I would, I think that one in particular, it is a very specific barrier that stops somebody from even being able to apply. So, you know, so I'll just leave it at that. Like I said, this will all come forward in a study session. Once staff have the opportunity to fully dig into the rent stabilization bill and be able to present, not just on what's happening at the state and how our current policies are going, but also a group of potential policies around screening. And then we also did urban agricultural code updates. Finally, it's been years and so that will, we did make a recommendation around that as well, so that will come to council at some point. I think the time is still, timing is still to be determined, but just a couple of things that that does. It would change, right now, we allow agriculture as a secondary use in most areas of the city, but it would expand it to all areas of the city and allowed outright as either primary or secondary use. It would align our policy with some of what we see in Tom Water or Olympia's urban growth area. One example of that has to do with the keeping of livestock and chickens in particular, you know, so it would, it would change how many chickens you're allowed to have depending on how much land you have to have chickens on, whereas right now, we just have a strict, doesn't matter how big your parcel is, you just get five chickens. And other livestock as well. And then also, there's also a nuisance clause that is, that the Planning Commission had requested, that would just have a place for us, you know, if there are challenges, people not managing livestock appropriately, for us to step in as code enforcement to address, you know, pests, odors, things like that. And so that will be coming to council. And then the Regional Housing Council met on the 28th. Just a couple of tidbits from there. We are seeing a substantial increase in the Homeless Prevention Fund. This is eviction prevention, rental assistance. We were projecting around 1 million, but it looks like we received 2.3 million, so that is good news for people who need rental assistance. On the flip side, the Right of Way Funding, which is now the Encampment Resolution Program funding, was at 9.6 million for Thurston County and is now at 5.6. So that's a pretty big reduction and we did accept a series of recommendations that prioritizes ongoing services to the housing that was constructed with investments from the state. So that includes Sandy's Flats, Maple Court, and Franz Anderson is getting the funding they need for operations. There's other things that are supported in there, Quinn Street Village, you know, we're able to retain an outreach position. The funding that we are getting overall from the funding, from this source of funding is significantly reduced, but we're able to maintain some administrative and outreach funding for the city. I will highlight that there is a pretty significant gap in funding for Unity Commons. This is, it's one of those things where, you know, it was the first project we built, there wasn't, there really wasn't state investment in it because the state was not yet invested in it. So that was not on the list of priority projects. So there is some funding from our, you know, our consolidated funding pool. There is some funding coming in from the now what's called the Encampment Resolution Program, but there's still a $500,000 gap for the ongoing operations of Unity Commons. So that is something that we're gonna need to reckon with as a Regional Housing Council because that's a really important project right there. And then finally, there was also a retreat for the RHC. It was a half day retreat last Friday. We did a lot of collaborative work around just updating the vision for the RHC and making sure we're all on the same page with that. And, you know, we started digging more into like the nuts and bolts, like so what do we actually do? And I want to say that the conversation started to get more robust and, you know, you could see points of disagreement about towards the end of the four hours, so it sounds like we're gonna have another retreat. But the big question is, is the role that the RHC plays in policy and specifically policy recommendations to the jurisdictions who are a part of it. And there's some, there's some differences of opinion around that, but, you know, we'll keep talking through it and, you know, see where we land. So that's my report.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Mayor Potem.
Maybe we can hop on the phone sometime and just kind of talk some of these things out. A couple of those things, because I know you're gonna remember, is I was really kind of interested in the social, looking at social security. That's one that always irks me, that's, you know, we're, I've always been told to protect those sacred numbers and so when people ask me for them, I really need to know why they need it. But I think about sort of like background checks, for example, and so, yeah, I'm just curious about more of what you've learned and love to talk through it. But even if not for sort of our sanctuary city status reason, also just personal privacy for folks and the liability of it, we don't need to be asking as much as we can, if we're not gonna use the personal data for something, if we could just not have it and encourage people to do the same, it's just end with good data management. And so I'm curious about that and I'm glad that you sort of honed in on it. So I wonder about the chickens and like how much land you have with chickens, because chicken coop sizes don't always change and so if you have five chickens or 10 chickens, sometimes the coop size is still the same. So, yeah, so I'm just kind of curious where that came from. Maybe it's because of sound, but anyways, yeah. So, but yeah, so I wonder, is that because of disturbing your neighbors or is it because of, you know, the wellbeing of the chicken? I don't know. So anyways, and then, oh, also, this is maybe going to sound a little shady, but it's an honest question. For the Regional Housing Council, how long have you all had that discussion, if you had to estimate, about whether or not you should be a policy recommending board?
Like, how long during the retreat or how many months have we been wrestling with this?
How long overall?
I would say ever since I came on to the Regional Housing Council, it's been a point of discussion. I think there's interest from some of the members who represent their jurisdictions on the council to dig into policy efforts. It says in our ILA that we may take, that we may work on policy, you know, as it pertains to the region. It doesn't say that we will. But some of the challenges that have come up on it, so, you know, well, we'll talk about some policy issues. We actually created a whole work plan and it included digging in on some policy issues. But some of the challenges are, you know, not every jurisdiction has the same staff capacity to engage on the development of recommendations. And, you know, and then we see things like what happened with the, what's currently happening with the Climate Mitigation Collaborative or whatever it's called, where they did all work regionally on the home energy score and, you know, here we are ready to launch in Olympia and we're waiting for other jurisdictions to decide when and if they'd like to take it up. And part of it has to do with capacity, you know. I know in that one in particular, Lacy's looking at it in 2026 and Tom Water's digging in deeper, but, so it's been an ongoing conversation for probably the whole time I've been on the Regional Housing Council. Our primary function is to make funding recommendations to the county for the, you know, local, state and federal dollars available to our region, yet there's more that we sometimes want to do. Sometimes we get looked at as like, oh, the Regional Housing Council should take up that discussion. One example is the Grants Pass decision and like, oh, well, this changes things, like the Regional Housing Council should discuss this. But it's sometimes kind of a tough place to have a conversation when you have jurisdictions who have different approaches and, you know, don't want to necessarily have to change how they do things because of a group formed through an ILA that does not have legislative power, you know. Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a weird ebb and flow in terms of like the trying to take something up and then having it kind of dissipate.
Thanks, that gives a lot of great context. Appreciate your representing us on the RHC and I'm sure there's a lot of thoughtful discussion work that that group has done and also, you know, I ask because this has come up and not just from you, but it's come up before from other members of the RHC or other people that have served and, you know, sometimes when it comes down to like, if somebody doesn't want to do something, let's move on so we can put more of our effort into things that we can actually do and the hour's also getting late, or at least my work day is getting late for me. And so I just, I just think about, gosh, how annoying it is having the same conversation over and over. It makes me not even want to go to meetings, you know. What are we accomplishing in this? So, yeah, and certainly we don't want you there and sort of spinning in the same circle. So let us know how we can support. Appreciate you talking, talking it through and bringing it to the fore and I believe City Manager Bernie was there with you too at the retreat. And so hopefully a decision can be made and we can all move forward.
Yeah. And to answer your chicken question, what we're looking at is just modeled off of what Tom Water does. The chickens still need to be enclosed in something, but on a larger lot, there is more space, there's ways to just kind of like buffer any impacts around noise or anything when you have more space. But, but the chickens do still need to be enclosed, but you can, you know, maybe get a larger enclosure if there's a larger space, so, you know.
How many people are doing that?
Thank you for the chicken answer.
All right, additional questions? Seeing none, Councilmember Vanderpool.
I'm gonna keep this very short. Interstate Transit Authority met a couple weeks ago. We approved the collective bargaining agreement with the HU. That long negotiation is over. We've, it's all been voted on, we voted for, voted on it, which is great because now we can focus on other tasks that we need to in the region, particularly like our transit improvement plan. We're gonna be voting on that tomorrow and other things like that. So I'm certainly glad that we're moving on to the next chapter in that. I actually came by here to see the very tail end of the Affordable Housing Form that was in council chambers a couple weeks ago, week and a half ago. And, you know, I noticed, I took a picture of all of the group shareouts and I noticed most of it, you know, a good chunk of it is stuff that we're currently working on or have worked on or we're planning on working on and it seems like that's, it's good to see that there's an alignment with the need of the public and what we're working on in our work plan. I felt that was very positive to see that. But yeah, that's my report.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Seeing none, Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Well, first, I also, as you mentioned, attended the APIC event, the tour of the Welcome Figure Workshop, the Garden Build Day with Councilmember Madron. And last Sunday, or actually a week ago Sunday, attended an event at Temple Beth Hatfellow called Never Again Is Now that was sponsored by the Japanese American Citizens League and it's oral history of Japanese incarceration at the Puyallup Fairgrounds and I was lucky enough to sit next to somebody who was a girl who was in incarceration for a couple of years of her early life. So, so that was a good conversation and related to that, so in 1985, council first passed a resolution declaring Olympia to be known as a city of peace. a resolution declaring Olympia to be known as a city of peace. And that was focused mostly on Central American refugees fleeing from political violence. And then in 2016, we passed a resolution declaring Olympia a sanctuary city, making it clear that the city serves and protects our residents regardless of their immigration status, and that we remain a safe haven for those who are politically persecuted. So we've kept that going. I've been in daily contact with the family of a detained constituent who was arrested at the airport as he and his family returned from a vacation. And we've had, I've been part of debriefing three ICE events in Olympia over this last week that look just like what you see on the TV news of multiple vehicles and a whole bunch of people getting out with masks on to grab a person. So just, just to say that there are a lot of people in the community tracking closely, figuring out ways to engage, and I'm proud of our statement that we've made, and glad to be doing my best to try to represent our constituents in this awful situation.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Any questions or comments? Mayor Potem, win.
I just, I know I'm not alone in this. I just so appreciate you keeping on top of that, especially just connecting with refugees resettling, with people that are helping on that effort, with, you know, what ICE is doing in the community. I know our law enforcement is as well. You're just being proactive and steadfast with it, and then also sharing it with the city manager and us as more and more of these incidents come along, it just, it helps remind us that, you know, the threats are real, and hopefully we can sort of shift and figure out what support looks like as there's more and more pressure. I can't imagine that sitting through any of that is a great feeling, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to second that, and thank you for being very much involved. And, yeah, unfortunately, I have heard of two more additional incidents since that first one, and I will say that whether or not these arrests by ICE and by extension, potential deportation is justified or not is really irrelevant in the context of the current tone and atmosphere that the national and federal government has around immigration policy right now, and the fact that everyone is entitled to due process, whether or not you are guilty of a crime or not. And so this is something that, you know, I personally want to be watching closely and making aware, making our congressional delegation aware of these folks, so that our federal representatives can put the pressure on the agencies to make sure that they're following the law. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Potem, win.
I think I just have one thing. Yeah, I just have one thing. It's the biggest thing that I want you all to be aware of, and hopefully say yes to if you're available. So at our last CLIPS meeting, that would be our regular May meeting, we were discussing in reports, and we're getting ready for our June meeting, and that meeting is gonna look a little different for us. It won't be a committee that meets virtually, we'll be meeting here in chambers. It is, I can get the date to you, it's the 4th Wednesday. It's the 25th. Thank you. Thank you to the city manager's office. So it's the 25th, that evening at 5:30 here in chambers, and we'll be meeting with, the CLIPS committee will be meeting with all the staff liaisons, the chairs, the vices, the co-chairs, so the leadership of the advisory bodies. And we'll have a light sort of framework for the evening, but it's really a chance to connect, and we can talk about work plans, we'll be sent, we've seen them all, but we'll, we've sent that ahead of time to just refresh us and hear about their biggest priorities. And over the years, we've heard on CLIPS that connecting with the council, and then also them connecting with each other, is such a desire, and we would love to open it up to not just CLIPS committee members, but however many councils would like to attend, we're gonna publicly notice it anyways, and so it'd be great if we were all there. No pressure, I know that we all have really busy schedules, but something to look out for. And advisory bodies, members, and staff liaisons would be just pleased as pie to see us all there, so hope you consider it.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mayor Potem, win? All right. Seeing none. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I have no report.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Councilmember Vanderpoel, your pesky Orioles will be beating my Mariners three to one right now. Oh, God, you got it. Just a couple items. One is, I had the opportunity on Sunday to attend the 50th anniversary of the New Life Baptist Church. It was an amazing celebration, and for those that don't know, they've been around and established in 1975. They are the oldest and largest predominantly African-American congregation in Thurston County in southwest Washington. And again, I want to thank Dr. Thelma Jackson for the invitation and the gracious welcome when I was there, and I always leave those celebrations with so much hope and so much positive energy, so I just want to thank them for the time that I got to spend with them on Sunday. And then lastly, just a moment of personal privilege, I'm not gonna be here next week. My niece is graduating from high school, and I'm gonna be attending her graduation, and so for Addison, just want you to know that Shea, Shea, and Nini are proud of you. That's my report.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for the city manager? Seeing none. All right, well, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.